Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 13. If you're watching live Monday, February 13, we invite you to call in if you have comments or questions. The call-in number is (914) 769-1677. As always, you can also watch our meetings on Verizon FiOS, Cablevision Optimum, or live webcasting at PCTV76.org. After the meeting, a day or two lag, you can pick it up with on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org as well. Our scheduled meetings are all here at 80 Wheeler Avenue. Our next regular meeting is Monday, February 27 at 8:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00. But prior to that, on Tuesday, February 21, is the annual state assigned day for tax assessment grievance night. So that has been scheduled for Tuesday, February 21. It will take place at the Clinton Street Center, at the corner of Wheeler and Clinton Street on the first floor, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. If you are planning to grieve your taxes, you should be in touch with Jim Timmings, the Village Assessor, and he can connect you with the right forms. And you can either file that with him, or if you care to appear at the grievance night, both to follow or to follow up a filing with further comments. So the primary news of the night, and I know we have people here in the audience as well as people watching at home, interested in a project that has been the source of a lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks. And that is that the New York State Department of Transportation has, it turns out, since the year 2007, been working on a system they call ATIS, Advanced Traveler Information System. And there are a whole series of components to this. Some of them have already been rolled out. It affects four parkways in Westchester County that are under state control, and that would be the Cross County Parkway, the Sprain, the Hutchinson River Parkway, and the Sawmill. Many of you may have noticed that there have been a series of smaller posts put up along the parkways, and certainly along the Sawmill recently, that have a small solar array attached to them. That installation is part of this system. Those are acoustic receptors that actually listen to traffic and are able to interpret the sounds of the cars going by and transmit data back to the headquarters, which is the traffic control center in the police headquarters and information headquarters that was recently built on the Sprain in Hawthorne. The idea of this system, by the state's description, is ultimately to collect all kinds of information about the traffic situation in the tri-state area, ultimately to make it possible to connect the systems that exist in Long Island, New York City, and Westchester, and accumulate all that information, both to assess what's actually going on with travel and to assist in long-term planning, to respond when traffic starts to seize up, and also to respond in emergency situations. So the piece of it that has already been built on the Sawmill, as I mentioned, are these acoustic receptors. And those, as I understand it, are currently transmitting their data back to headquarters by CDMA cellular cell service. In other words, each one of those towers essentially has a cellphone in it that it is using to transmit its information back. The next phase of the project, and the piece that is controversial here, is that they intend to erect a series of towers that would include cameras. And those cameras have some sort of joystick control that would allow an operator at the headquarters to swivel the camera around to review what's going on at any given point in the highway. Their goal across these four parkways is to establish a network of cameras that essentially allows them to see every stretch of the road. So the program, as it is currently developed, calls for towers that are about 40 feet high on the section of the Sawmill from the Bronx border up to the point where the Sawmill Parkway crosses the Teconic. The reason the towers are 40 feet high in that area is that they are digging and laying a fiber optic data spine along the roadway right-of-way. And these cameras can be on 40-foot poles, which gets them high enough to give them the angle of view they need, and are hardwired back to the fiber optic spine so that they can transmit the data they capture, the video edges back to the headquarters. The problematic piece of this is that when the project crosses the Teconic and continues north on the Sawmill Parkway, they propose not to build the fiber optic spine, and instead, as a cost-saving measure, to switch to microwave transmission of the data. So what that means is, the towers that have been proposed, and let me preface this by saying, nothing has been bought, nothing has been built by the state, and we have engaged in fruitful discussions that I'll describe in a minute. But when the project crosses the Teconic, the towers jump from about 40 feet to an average of 100 to 120 feet high. The reason they do that is not that the cameras have to be that high, but that the microwave antennas have to be above the tree line and above any buildings that might be in the way, because they require line-of-sight transmission from one tower to the next to transmit their signals. The idea is that when that would be fully built out, fiber optic below the Teconic, microwave transmission north of the Teconic, the existing acoustic gizmos, which currently use the cell service, would be switched over, and they would then transmit their data through whichever data service is available in that area, that is, fiber optic below the Teconic or microwave to the north. So the project, and believe me, this data has been a little hard to accumulate, but we now, I think, have a pretty good sense of it. The project involves a proposed seven towers that would start north of the Teconic in Hawthorne. There would be two in Mount Pleasant, one roughly where the Teconic and the Sawmill meet. Tower number two in Mount Pleasant, headed north, would be just south of the Marble Avenue exit. There are then two towers proposed in the Village of Pleasantville. Tower number three, these are my numbers, not theirs, tower number three, working our way north, would be at the corner of Grant Street and the Sawmill Parkway. Tower number four, also in the Village of Pleasantville, would be roughly in the area where the high-tension wires cross the Sawmill Parkway, so that it would be adjacent to the Sawmill behind Washington Avenue, roughly where the high-tension wires cross near the Aqueduct. Towers number five, six, and seven, in this sequence of seven towers, are all in the town of Newcastle. Number five, roughly near the Chappaqua train station. Number six switches to the median of the Sawmill, because at that point, the Sawmill bifurcates and has a grassy median in between, is roughly a little bit north of the train station. And tower number seven, which is the last in this series, would be a little bit south of Roaring Brook Road. If you go back and you look at the 2007 documents that the state had proposed, they were originally envisioning that this system would go all the way to 684. Evidently, and I apologize in advance if I have misstated anything the state has thus far told me, but I think I've got a pretty good control over it, they decided somewhere along the way, as a cost-benefit decision, to stop the project at the Roaring Brook Road location in Chappaqua and not continue further north on the Sawmill. And I think the basis for the state's decision there was that the nature of the traffic in those locations is less problematic, less likely to provide a big bang for the buck to invest in this kind of a system, to monitor it with these cameras. So what's proposed at the moment by the state, as I mentioned, is these seven towers, two of which would be in the Village of Pleasantville. The two in the Village of Pleasantville would both be 120 feet high and about 5 feet wide at the base. These are massive towers, I dare say the tallest thing in the Village of Pleasantville, excepting the existing cell tower that is behind our DPW garage on Castleton Street. And unlike that tower, which is a slim monopole with the equipment inside it, this tower has external microwave antennas, as well as external cameras that can be controlled remotely. So I think the first thing to be said is, all of you I know are upset about this, all of us are upset about it too. I don't think there's any diversion of opinion among anybody in Pleasantville that this is not a project that should go forward. I've had conversations with our neighbors in the town of Mount Pleasant and our neighbors in the town of Newcastle, and they are on our side as well. So the good news I have to report to you tonight is that all three of the affected communities that would get these seven tall towers are of the same view. And among the many questions that are reasonable to be asked is, why is it necessary to despoil our environment and spend all this money in order to observe what we already know, which is, traffic's pretty good in this area until it rains, in which case it stops? And you can find that out at weather.com. So the situation might be different. We all might have a different view of this. If the state had elected to include the extra cost of continuing the underground fiber optic spine north to the end of their proposed project, had they done that, that would allow them to provide these cameras on modest, much thinner 40-foot poles instead of big fat 120-foot poles. Clearly, there would still be issues to be addressed about that, but an awful lot less problematic. In addition to that, it would eliminate the issue of microwave transmission, which is a concern for some as well. So we've been in touch as well with State Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins' office, as well as Assemblyman Abenanti. And I can say with some confidence that they will advocate for us. Assemblyman Abenanti, in particular, has scheduled a meeting with the Commissioner of Transportation on various subjects this week, and has pushed this issue to the top of his agenda. And as I mentioned, I think we've got essentially unanimity of view between the three affected communities. And I had an extended conversation with a couple of people in DOT today, including a person who is highly placed. And we are going to continue that discussion this week. And obviously, I'm not in a position to say what DOT would do, but I would say that it seems, first off, highly likely that they would be willing to find an alternate location for the Grant Street Tower, which would make it, put it in a less prominent location. That does not address many of the issues that are on our radar screen, if you can permit me that term. It certainly improves some of the concerns, but certainly not all of them. I think the bottom line for me, and I think for all of us, is that it's simply hard to see why this kind of investment ought to be made in an environment where the only real investment we need to see is an investment in flood mitigation. And until and unless there's an investment in flood mitigation, we hardly need a bunch of cameras to tell them what all of us can tell them today and tomorrow and the next day. So I am cautiously optimistic that we have, through the efforts on our side of the table and through the assistance of all of you, making your voices heard, had an impact and will continue to use that leverage to see where we end up. So it certainly is the view of this board that this project should not go forward. And I think I can speak for the town council in Mount Pleasant, as well as the town council in the town of Newcastle, that they would agree. And it is, I think, quite clear that the opposition of all three affected communities will be important in this further discussion. Worth noting, obviously, that communities that are getting the 40-foot-high towers have less concern, but there are some other very tall towers to be installed elsewhere in the county. I don't have the details on all of those. They don't affect our immediate community. I believe that some of them are on the cross-county, which perhaps is an environment that is less sensitive than ours. But the rest of it's out there. There are something like 50 towers in total proposed as part of the project throughout Westchester County. But again, seven north of the Teconic, two in the Village of Pleasantville, and we continue to work quite aggressively about this and I think are making some headway. So let me address a couple of things that people have asked so far about, and then I'd invite you to make comments as you wish. But as the project is constructed right now, the only communications on these towers are microwave communications. There is no private sector involvement in this, and there are no cell antennas on these towers. I asked a couple of people at DOT, what happens after you have these towers in place if whoever, Verizon, comes along and says, "I'll pay you 20,000 bucks a year to let me put my antenna on your tower." The response to that was that they are not intending to do that. I certainly don't have any ironclad assurance that that wouldn't be the case. One of the issues, I suppose, that arises about that is that cellular communication requires a substantial pad, a concrete pad on the ground with a fairly substantial amount of equipment, and in some locations would be difficult to accommodate. At any rate, as it stands right now, DOT has assured me that there is no cellular component to this, only microwave communications. So that was one of the things that's been out there and been under discussion, and I know a concern of many people. But I do think that the state's decision to cut the project off at Roaring Brook Road suggests that the cost-benefit really isn't very good to extend from Hawthorne to Chappaqua, and that the logical thing to do, from our standpoint, is for them to cancel the project north of the Teconic and simply not build it. We've made that point clearly. We continue to make that point, and our neighbors are with us. So I invite anyone who has any comments. They are welcome to speak. But I preface that by saying, none of us, I don't think we, any of us likely disagree. Everybody has their own issues, I'm sure. But if you're interested in comment, you're welcome to come up. Please let us know your name and your address.
You might want to also mention that all the written communication that we've had is a matter of record as well.
Yes, yes. Jonathan makes a good point, that we've received all of your emails as well as phone calls, and that is all part of the written record. And we will transmit to the state the scale and scope, as well as the detail of the comments received. So that has been very helpful. I thank you.
And also, if you only sent them to us, I would, if you live in the town of Mount Pleasant, I would strongly recommend you also copy the town board in Mount Pleasant, if you are a resident of Mount Pleasant. Let them, they should be aware of your voice as well.
I agree. And I think that's absolutely true, and it's not because they disagree or need persuading either, but it helps build the case.
It helps them to have it on the record, like it helps us to have it on the record.
So does anyone have anything to say? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Deana Nelken. I live on Hillside Avenue in Pleasantville.
Okay. So just to be clear, that's not the Village of Pleasantville, that's the town of Mount Pleasant.
Correct. We're half and half, actually.
And you guys have the misfortune of looking at this.
Oh, yes. First of all, you had mentioned what you thought ATIS stands for. Where did you get that from?
From the state's documents. The state's documents call it Advanced Traveler Information System.
Because on this map, which says what it is, it says just ATIS Communications, which also stands for Alliance for Telecommunications Industry Solutions, which is made up of AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, Verizon, and a whole bunch of other cell towers.
Good. Well, I, obviously, I'm only telling you what the state has told me.
Sure. But the state has told me a bunch of different things.
I will say that I am cautious about pronouncements by the state, but I would be very, very surprised to think that they are lying about the equipment they're putting on it. Again, I think there's a concern, if these towers were ever built, about what might happen down the road, simply because tall towers in this right-of-way, I think, might become attractive to cell companies.
Sure.
But as of the moment, the antennas they proposed to put at the top are microwave, not cellular.
I think it's an acronym they mixed up.
Right.
Sounds like to me.
Yeah, it might be, but again, unless I see it in writing, I don't believe them, because I've already gotten a bunch of different information.
Okay.
Also, I spoke to the engineer in charge. He says they've already laid the conduit that this is going to happen.
Well, except that there isn't any conduit between the towers in our area. They may have laid some conduit for power lines, but they have not bought the towers. Indeed, they have not even signed off on the design drawing for the towers. Their goal would be, assuming they hadn't encountered any opposition, to be able to buy, build, and install these in the summer-ish of this year.
Right. That's what Rich told me.
But I've gotten it from both the design engineer, the project manager, and people higher up in DOT that they haven't bought them yet.
Okay. I'd like to see the plans, because as far as I'm concerned, ATIS could mean either one of these. And as far as I'm concerned, if it's cellphone towers, then it's something where these cellphone tower companies say that there's a coverage gap, when there isn't, according to each of their websites, that say that Pleasantville has the best possible coverage you could get for them.
Okay.
Well, it's because of our tower at DPW, which is 130 feet tall.
I just want to be clear, and I appreciate.
That was the next question, actually, was, why couldn't they use that tower for the microwave rather than making a new tower?
Well, I don't pretend to be a microwave engineer, but the first, the first point is that the towers are accommodating cameras. The cameras don't have to be that high, but the microwave transmission has to be that high in order to have line-of-sight between the towers above any potential obstacle. So the, and I'm sure there is a theoretical maximum distance for reliable transmission from tower to tower. I don't know what it is.
I do, actually, because I was on the FCC website, and they said it could be as low as one mile, but it could be as far as 45 miles between each one.
Right. The issue being that if you have a camera on a pole, you need a way to transmit the data back to wherever it's supposed to go. So unless there's a wired line, as there will be south of the Teconic, then that camera needs some means of transmitting its data wirelessly. And the solution they have proposed, as I say, is microwave.
Also, the way I understand it is they need a circuit of poles in order to measure the traffic. They measure the car at this pole and at that pole, and they figure out how fast.
Although I think that's actually mostly being done through the existing acoustic poles.
They need to do it with sound and visual.
I mean, the basic point is, they want to put cameras in various locations to cover the whole parkway, and they need a way to get the data back.
Right. But still, you know, with everything being connected by underlying wires, I mean, you've got Verizon and you've got Optimum Online. They should, just maybe it won't be as fast as they want it to be, like instantaneously, but they should be able to hook up very easily underground from any point without having to lay a whole conduit for it.
I mean, they'd have to respond to that. They are laying their own fiber optic spine along the Sawmill up to the Teconic.
And who's paying for that?
It's out of this state money.
Okay.
So us.
So we're paying for it for everybody south of the Teconic, but up above us, then we have to, we don't get it.
I think federal money is involved as well. Yeah. Believe me, I've made that point. What are we, chopped liver?
Yeah, exactly. And I'm sure with the wealth in this area overall is something where, and the taxes that we pay in this area, that they should, you know, be more concerned about that. I don't understand if they, they already have, you said also about these 40-foot poles with boxes with information.
I don't know that the acoustic transponders are 40 feet high. Those are the gizmos that have the little solar panel on them?
Yes.
I haven't measured them. I don't think they're as high as 40 feet, but I'm not sure.
I think they're about 30 feet.
Yeah. But they do go all the way up to 684.
Right. And those are transmitting.
So those are just basically useless now? Because they can't connect to anything?
Those are the acoustic part. They haven't even hear it.
And those, each of them at the moment, essentially has a cellphone in it.
Okay.
And is transmitting the data it captures back to the headquarters via this cell service, CDMA cell service.
And why do they need to do this differently for this tower?
Because, I think, and again, this is my belief, that video is a much more bandwidth-intensive venture than the data captured by the acoustic sensor.
Shane's giving you a nod.
You give me a nod? Shane is reporting the same.
Okay. So it's just something where it seems with technology improving so rapidly, that this will be obsolete, or they're going to find some easier way of doing it within a short period of time. And if they are going to persist in doing this, that they should at least have some kind of a funds in escrow that you guys have, so that when they are considered obsolete, that they can, you can use that money to remove these towers.
Well, let me say, the state, the hierarchy, the pecking order of governments is such that the state can do what the state wants to do on its own property, and it's exempt from local zoning and exempt from local oversight. So they could build these towers and then abandon them and then leave them, if they were so inclined. And obviously, however, the influence of the communities and the influence of the elected representatives in Albany affects them. And, you know, there are plenty of circumstances when I've been annoyed at DOT. But I will say that it's clear that our comments are having an effect. I can't sit here and tell you that coast is clear, it's all done, but I do feel as though we're getting somewhere.
Now, also, DOT project engineer, Michael Duval, had said that there was another spot that could be used instead of the spot by Grant Street without any difficulty.
I believe that, my understanding is, they can move the Grant Street location a little bit north or a little bit south, and still stay within the parameters that they need, which is to get the coverage of the camera of all the highway and stay within the microwave transmission distance. So I think he's responding to that, and that's obviously slightly good news, because the location right on the corner is pretty darn exposed. But that comment is about taking the existing 120-foot tower and putting it a little bit different location.
We don't want it at all.
They're saying that the microwave is purely because of the cameras in order to have video?
The microwave is the mechanism by which the cameras are sending their data, because there isn't a hardwired connection.
And that's what the difference is.
Right. There's a hardwired connection below the Teconic on the Sawmill, but none above. Because they decided not to build it, and the reason I think they decided not to build it, I'm interpreting their comments, but I think I'm right, is that the intensity of the traffic issue is north of the Teconic, didn't warrant spending twice as much money on it, and therefore, you know, the price paid is that all of us would have to look at these grim towers. Believe me, we've made that point.
Okay.
Because really, they only have to depend on the acoustic to hear the water lapping up against the dividers to know that there's no traffic. Yeah, yeah. The car is floating down the Sawmill.
There was also a discussion by one of the people who I had emailed this information to, that originally, the land was dedicated for putting a pedestrian bridge over Grant Street, over the Sawmill. I had spoken to Michael Tester earlier today to find out if he had any information on that, and he said, because it was a state project, not village project, that they don't have anything. So I've.
Well, all I can say, I mean, there certainly has been commented various points about the possibility of pedestrian overpass at Grant Street. And we had a project that Donna is aware of, to build a little bridge on the Pleasant Avenue side, so that you wouldn't have to walk on that very narrow bridge. The money, there is, to my knowledge, and I think I would know, zero chance that anyone's building a pedestrian overpass over the Sawmill anytime soon. At various points in time, there have been discussions, fears, concerns, hopes, depending on your view, about closing the Grant Street Pleasant Avenue grade crossing entirely, because obviously, you know, these grade crossings without jug handles and pull-off lanes are dangerous. At the moment, I'm not aware of any plan to do anything there. And I do think that as a matter of law, the state is entirely free to do this, and we don't get a say. But I don't throw that out to suggest that they, at least at the moment, are trying to throw their muscle around that way. They have absolutely come to the table.
Okay. Well, as you find out more information, and we find out more information, I'd like to be able to approach you guys again, depending on what it is.
Absolutely. You're welcome anytime.
What I don't understand is, well, first of all, if you guys first heard about this last September, or this has been going on since 2009, why don't you have a full packet of information? And why are you only finding out stuff this week, as I find things happening to you?
Here's what DOT, here's what DOT says. They say that they sent all of the affected communities in Westchester, and it's a list of, I don't know, 30, information and request for comment about this project in 2007. And in fact, they've sent me a copy of what they sent. I wasn't the mayor at the time. I don't recall having seen this, but, you know, to be perfectly honest, what they sent in 2007 is a speculative project that says, "We're thinking of doing this. Here's how it might work. Here are the components that might be involved." At that point, nobody had designed anything, and no locations had been identified. Had somebody ever sent to any of these communities a drawing that said, "Well, we're planning to build 220-foot towers, and here they are," obviously, everybody would have jumped up and taken notice. I can tell you that the town of Mount Pleasant had no and taken notice. I can tell you that the town of Mount Pleasant had no knowledge that they were getting two, and the town of Newcastle had no knowledge that they were getting three. And when we inquired about the location on Grant Street, we were not proactively told that there was a second location in Pleasantville either. And it was only today that I actually got the data about exactly where it is. So.
So if they're not giving you full information, how do you actually believe them that when they say it's microwaves instead of cell?
Well, I talked to a lot of state people, and as I say, you have to listen a little bit with a cautious ear. But I do not believe that the top brass of DOT are simply lying to us about the equipment that they're putting on the towers. I don't believe that. By the same token, you know, they have made these assertions in writing, and if they were actually to build it, which I sincerely hope they don't, if we were to find that they had lied about the content, we'd obviously have recourse. I find that highly, highly, highly unlikely. I think the bigger risk about the cell piece of it would be the risk down the road, and it may very well be that there are some technical aspects that make microwave and cellular incompatible. I don't know. But, you know, you do wonder whether cell companies somewhere along the line offer revenue to the cash-strapped state and these towers turn into something else in addition. That's obviously a concern down the road. Hopefully, not a concern if we're successful in derailing the project. And, you know, obviously, people will have concerns about the electromagnetic frequencies that these things may operate on. But on a purely aesthetic level, you know, they're big, hunkin' towers that would be visible from almost everywhere in the village of Pleasantville, as well as, you know, highly visible in Chappaqua as well. So.
But I'll also say that when we saw some action going on down there at Grant Street, I think it was mid-November, and we inquired, because that's DOT property, what's going on down there. And we got back, I don't know, that document was just crazy. And we had actually discussed amongst ourselves, well, you know, do we get an environmental impact statement, a SEACRA, you know, we want to, you know, we want to know what's going on. And we sent off a communication to them, which I don't think they ever answered.
They don't need one, according to the FCC.
No, they don't need one. Look, look.
But that was the first time we heard of it. It was November of 2011.
I think we're all glad that the community is engaged, and I thank you for your, all of you, for your engagement. If I, it's a free country, you'll do whatever you want to do, and you should. If I had advice, I would say, keep your powder dry for another week because I think we're making some progress. If we arrive at the point where we don't feel like we're making progress, that would be the time to ignite the fireworks. But I do think that it's an argument that resonates with reasonable people, that now that this ugly, intrusive, problematic seven-tower section is only covering a few miles, and those few miles are, you know, 90% affected by flooding, traffic problems, as opposed to plain old congestion, that the return on investment for a taxpayer's dollar isn't all that much. I assure you, I have made the suggestion, that I'm sure will not work, that the $2. Something million dollars these things would cost would be a nice down payment on flood abatement. But, you know, the pots of money these things come from are also tied up with regulations. And I do think there's some federal money involved. You know, I don't want to ding DOT entirely because I do think there is a piece.
I will. They don't fill a pot of oil.
Wood cop, yeah, bad cop. I do think there is a piece of this project in intense, traffic-heavy areas that makes sense. Let's harness technology to understand traffic and, you know, plan and monitor and this, that, and the other thing. In addition, I think that, you know, many of these things allow the public to log in and see what's going on through these same webcams. I don't know whether that would be the case with these. But, you know, the bottom line is, when there's trouble, it's either an accident, which is, you know, happens but isn't terribly frequent, or rain, and, you know, here's my cellphone. Call me, I'll tell you if it's raining.
Right.
Assemblyman Ambenanti lives in Pleasantville. That's a bit of a.
Just one quick question, slightly off topic.
Okay.
With all of these little cellphone 30-foot towers that are up the Sawmill.
Yes.
I'm a little bit of a speed demon myself. So am I going to eventually start getting tickets from every single one of these? Because that's going to get expensive. I just have no idea at all.
Now, I think we all have a sworn oath here. Everything that has been said to me is that those acoustic sensors are not capturing any data that is specific to anybody. They're basically listening to tires on the road. So.
Which sounds like a waste of time, anyway, because with all these Robert Moses bridges that they're never going to take down, they're not going to widen the road.
I mean, we really, at several points in this whole discussion, I've thought that, you know, we're going to have a, you know, a space-age, mega-million-dollar Star Wars system that will give us, you know, real-time, immediate feedback of how fast our infrastructure is crumbling. So stay tuned.
I'll let anyone else talk. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Did you hear that?
Someone is wanting me. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, everyone. My name's Don Williman. I'm on 170 Mountain Road. I'm across the street from the village. I'm in the town. And I walk across to the train station each and every day since 1983. So I know Grant Street pretty well. I walk it on two feet. I'm also an electrical engineer, and I worked for the state for a different agency, which I'd rather not mention in a public forum. But I manage projects. I'm a project manager, and I know what a project manager goes through when they encounter the public. I do it down the city. It's not pretty. But I'm sure the people are honorable and trustworthy in telling the truth. But I'm also sure that their management performance review is based on them delivering a project, as is mine. Your job as a project manager is to deliver your goods. And the fact that a community is opposed to your project, well, that's something you have to somehow absorb, maybe find an alternative if they push back hard enough. And I suspect there are alternatives here. I mean, I've heard mention about the cell tower over here, and I don't know if that could be adapted for use for microwaves. However, that's something they would never want to favor unless they were forced into it, because that would be a lease position versus a purchase position. This would be purchased over at Grant Street. They would purchase, build a tower, keep it for life, not pay anybody else but themselves. So that would be their natural position. So they would fight that kind of proposal, even if it was technically feasible, which I'm not sure. Someone would have to study that. So, you know, that's the kind of thing you'd be up against. But site selection, I'm really surprised because you mentioned SEACRA. And I'm a little, maybe FCC gets them out of SEACRA? I don't know. You know, SEACRA is, when you're getting state funding, the funding people say, well, before you choose a site, site selection is a very important process. It affects your neighbors, not just how you use your property, but how they get affected, whether it's visually or electronically or whatever. And I'm really surprised because the agency I'm in, we can do very little without either SEACRA, or if it's federal, it's even worse. You know, I figure, what is it, NIPA? If it's a federal project, oh my God, everything's doubly as hard environmentally. You have to prove, and the big words are due diligence. You have to prove due diligence, because God forbid somebody sues you, and you didn't do your due diligence. Now where are you, project manager? You didn't do the right thing. You know, take a walk. Your project is going south. So the people who run projects know this full well. And, you know, I'm not trying to rabble-rous, but just throwing, you know, how these things go. They're a big agency, but they are subject to these little nuances, and site selection's a very, very important thing. The FCC, however, I know, has done a lot because they knew in the Telecommunications Act that every community in America would fight cellphone towers if they didn't have a leg up. So there is something to that. But you look around, and you do see accommodations. That's the other magic word, reasonable accommodation. You do see that in some communities. Hopefully, something could be worked out here. There's another thing. As a taxpayer, you wonder why they need a Cadillac system of needing to see each and every car. I certainly don't think they will, and I hope they don't, start reading license plates, because, you know, we're all in danger on that point. But the thing is, I commute on occasion to Manhattan with my car, and my wife whips out her Android phone, and she says, you know what, you better lay off the spring today because the traffic is pretty bad. And I've been talking to my friends, because we do radio systems, and said, where the hell is Google getting all this? What are the, how can they be that accurate? Where are their towers? And my wife just laughs at me. She goes, oh, you, you're working with the state, you think everything is the state. Well, guess what? Google has taken over a lot now, and they've done a lot of things. From, without getting into it in the meeting right here, there are other ways. They monitor, everyone's got cell phones, and they're monitoring some of that traffic. They're not perfect. These people are looking for perfection. Any engineer wants to design perfection. That's what a job of an engineer is. You want it to 99.9% reliability. I can count actual cars. That's what they want. That's what any engineer would design. But the Google system is maybe 87, maybe 89%. Somebody knows this number. Maybe that's good enough for the flood-prone area, so you know what, the flood is backing up. Time to get the ambulance out or whatever it is they need to do. Because in the end, they're just trying to increase the possibility of servicing the community for maintenance or first responders, which is important. But, you know, like, think some other people have pointed out about technologies. It's getting better. I'm amazed. But the state, if they got the money, they want to spend it on the Cadillac system. And that's what you're up against. It's a Cadillac system versus looking at newer technologies. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Don. Anybody else want to weigh in? That's it? Okay. So I thank you all for coming. Stay tuned. We will update everybody at our next televised meeting, which is Monday, February 27. So if you want to visit or tune in, then you'll hear what we have to say. I am hopeful that we may have more information about this before that, in which case, I've been corresponding periodically on this Yahoo list. That's not an official resource, but which many people are on, and I'll continue to do that. And we'll also use the Village website when we have more to report. But as I say, you know, you all can, should, and will do what you think is the right thing to do. If I were to offer advice, it's keep your powder dry, at least for a little while, because I think in the course of this week, we'll see how much cooperation we get. But I don't want you.
Go to a town in Mount Pleasant.
Yeah. I don't want you to leave here thinking that DOT has acted like a complete stone wall. We'll see how real progress is. It's not, it's not over till it's over. But stay tuned. And I think that it's fair to say that the five of us and the equivalent people sitting at these tables in Mount Pleasant and Newcastle are all of common mind, and that's a big resource. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Sorry for that brief break. We had to switch the tape after the discussion about the NYSDOT tower project. Had a couple of other announcements to make. And one of them is that each and every one of you should log on to PleasantvilleRecycles.org. Our Pleasantville Recycling Committee is a very active group, and they have done a great job in a thousand ways. And they've set up a website at PleasantvilleRecycles.org, which you can get to directly by typing that in, or at the Village website, Pleasantville-NY.gov. You'll find a link in the left-hand side to the recycling site. It's a great and informative site. One of the really useful things is a recycling A to Z page, where you can literally say, I'm trying to get rid of an old TV, one of my options. And it's a very, very good resource. And all of the people on the Pleasantville Recycling Committee deserve a lot of credit, not only for that, but the many other programs they are running. One of which I wanted to mention is a tour on March 5 of the Peekskill Solid Waste Plant. Our trash ends up going to a county-operated facility at Charles Point at Peekskill. And it's a pretty interesting and in many ways innovative facility. So if any of you are interested in a tour of the solid waste facility, that's going to take place on March 5 at 10:00 a.m. And the recycling committee asks that you RSVP by the 14th, that's tomorrow, which you can do at info@PleasantvilleRecycles.org. So this is the kind of thing that my kids laugh at me for. You're going on a tour of what? But I can tell you that the people that went on the tour of the, of the.
Merk.
Plastic recycling, Merk, what is it, Material?
Material.
Resource Recovery.
Resource Recovery Facility, which is the recycling, very good, Patty, yes, which is the recycling facility that the county operates down in Yonkers near Stu Leonard's. That's the plant where all the recyclables go. It's a really, really interesting day and totally worth doing. So get thee to PleasantvilleRecycles.org. And if anybody's interested in the March 5 tour of the Peekskill Plant, RSVP by tomorrow if you can to info@PleasantvilleRecycles.org. Number of people have asked me about what's going on with the digging and debris that seems to be appearing along the Sawmill Parkway, particularly south of Marble Avenue. I think we've mentioned the last meeting. The state has at long last actually mobilized to get in there and clean out the riverbed. So they've been dragging branches and debris and the like out of the riverbed with the hope that the beaver dams that accumulate in the Sawmill River and which perhaps contributing, are contributing to flooding in our area can be cleaned out. So far, we've not seen them working north of Marble Avenue.
Not in the village of Pleasantville at all.
And we are encouraging them to do so. Patty is our representative to the County Board of Legislators Task Force on matters of this kind. And I'm happy to report that there's a lot of productive talk. I don't know how much money there is behind it at this point, but certainly.
They're not revealing that.
The State Department of Foreland Conservation has gotten in and is actually making some progress in the Sawmill.
Well, the concern is that they've moved over to the Bronx River and not, without coming up north here to the village and cleaning up the Sawmill River in the village of Pleasantville. The little bit of cleanup that we had, our own guys did. But I hope that they come back here. Maybe we should call over at the county and see if.
There's a meeting this Thursday. So hopefully, there'll be some updates. This Sawmill River Advisory Board meeting this Thursday.
They haven't left, have they, Patty?
They have left.
Because it looks like, well, it looks like a war zone still down there.
They haven't picked up anything they've taken out of the river.
Are they planning to?
Well, they picked up some, but there's still lots of the pre-piles.
Actually, I was down that way today, and I didn't really notice hardly anything at all on the banks. Most of the big piles.
Well, that'd be helpful because we're concerned.
The ground was still disturbed, but obviously, you're not going to get growth in the middle of winter.
There are piles. There are the pre-piles.
I saw the piles out there today.
They removed a lot. I mean, they did a lot of work, but they, they did nothing north of Marble that really mattered for us.
But the important thing is south of the village, because the water, obviously, is flowing from up county down to Yonkers, where it goes into a concrete culvert and then eventually into the Hudson River, which they're planning to open up in daylight. But it's part of a downtown, Yonkers restoration of the stream.
It's open.
But opening the stream channel south of Pleasantville is essentially pulling the plug in the bathtub. That's where it's getting, when it's plugged up south of here, it's backing up, up into the village. And, and Peter and Patty, right as well, we need to get it cleaned up in Pleasantville, too, to expedite the flow out of the village. But the important part of it, I think, is that piece of it south of the village has been opened up.
Definitely. But we still, you know, we have residents that are still being flooded when the river backs up and right in the village of Pleasantville, and they're getting a lot of water in there. And that's been happening for a long time. We've gotten no relief at all.
So we'll keep you up to date on the Sawmill River Advisory Group and the progress that may happen along there. Then the last thing I had on my list to comment on, a number of people asked me about the, sort of, after-the-attack appearance of our downtown trees, especially those in front of the Iron Horse Grill. And now we have lost a tree and a half over on Manville Road near La Loft, courtesy of Hurricane Con Edison. So we, of course, will pull those out and replant as soon as we can come the planting season. The reason we haven't cut those off to make them at least look a little less untidy is that it's a whole lot easier to leave the stump there and maintain the hole in the ground, so that when we're ready to replant, we can use the heavy equipment to yank the existing trunk out and drop the new tree in. So if you cut it off flush with the ground, it would look better for the moment, but it would make the work harder come replanting time. So we're on it. We're aware of it. It was an extremely regrettable loss to lose all those trees all at once. And the ones we put back, obviously, will be a whole lot smaller than the ones that we lost, but hopefully, hardier and in the end, more long-lasting. So if anybody else have anything on their list. So if anybody else have anything on their list?
All right. That said, we'll go to the resolutions, Steve, number 16.
Resolved, pre-check registered dated February 13th, 2012, covering check numbers 71435 through 71596, has been reviewed and hereby approved as listed below. General Fund, $163,504.84. Miscellaneous Revenue Fund, $2,800. Water Fund, $32,397.06. Capital Fund, $500. Refuge Fund, $9,316.08. Pool Fund, $1,939.51. Trust and Agency, $2,997. For a total of $213,454.49.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I think the, uh, resolution numbers incorrect on that. Judy, is it?
That should be 16.
It should be 2012, 16.
Right. It says 2.6 on the actual sheet.
I had a question, Patty. On, on page three, the, uh, fire hydrant replacement, $11,680. Is that the one on, on, uh, in the old village? Or did we do?
No, that would have been a capital expense. Um, yeah, I thought that was a motor vehicle accident. We're, we're getting insurance reimbursement.
Okay, good. Which, where, where is this one?
It flooded.
Oh, right.
Campus Drive.
Okay, okay, all right. I know what you're talking about. All right, thanks. I didn't know.
But we do get, we do get reimbursed for that.
The moral of the which is please don't run into our fire hydrants.
Don't run into, yeah, they're very expensive.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, Mindy, 17.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on Monday, January 9th and January 23rd, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? The one comment to be made is that the January 9th meetings, uh, minutes, uh, reflect my comments about the Captain Lawrence Brewery and Scott Vaquero. They have, uh, made their move to Elmsford and we wish them the best of possible luck. They take with them the affection of Pleasantville and we continue to view them as honorary Pleasantville business.
Why weren't we invited to their ribbon cutting?
Question is, when Reader's Digest left, they always said they were from Pleasantville. So Captain Lawrence always said that too.
Believe me, I, I suggested, so. Turns out there are some rules, actually, when you're actually brewing things about, uh-
Where you say you're trying to-
Identifying where it's from.
Damn.
At any rate, best of luck to a business that has been extremely supportive of the Village of Pleasantville and, and will continue to be so. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 18.
Uh, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following election inspectors for the villages. March 20th, 2012 election, Ruth Merton, 128 Washington Avenue, Salvatore Talio, 75 Lenox Avenue, Giovanna Talio, 75 Lenox Avenue, Connie Mazulo, 30 Meadow Lane, Margarete Limetone, 233 Broadway, Ralph Cleeforth, 1A Clinton Street, Virginia San Fratello, 24-6 Foxwood Drive, and Joan Vassalo, 1A Clinton Street. Alternative inspectors, Joseph, Josephone Saras, Madison Avenue, and Gay Conn's of Honodoc Place. And her further, uh, resolved that the election shall be held at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, second floor boardroom, Pleasantville, New York, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks to all these people for signing on to be election inspectors. Again, the, uh, Village, uh, election will take place on March 20th, uh, for the mayor and two trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 19.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the Westchester County Department of Transportation Traffic Enforcement Program Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this?
Um, the county on occasion gets a truck, uh, governor's traffic safety grant and, um, they, uh, through intermunicipal agreements, allow local municipalities to participate in selective enforcement programs and enjoy, you know, the, uh, benefit of having those paid for through the grant. So, um, it, it's not a significant amount of money, but it does allow us to provide special details like, um, alcohol enforcement, speed enforcement and the like. I, I, I don't know if the chief is earmarked exactly what type of special patrol he'd like to have, but, um, certainly, you know, uh, we're entitled to something like a little over a thousand dollars. It will give us a few hours' worth of, um, you know, selective enforcement, maybe an evening or two. It has to be done at overtime rates. Those are the parameters of the grant. It can't be done during normal patrol activity.
It's a very strangely written, um, IMA. I, I-
You get a thousand sixty dollars.
That's all I got out of it. I mean, it's really, it's really not specific at all. I, I read it like twice.
I know.
Really interesting to read it twice. Better than reading it once, but-
You have a window of time to claim the money.
If a thousand people would give us a thousand sixty dollars, we'd be okay.
Yeah, it's, it's open.
And they, and John Schu is no longer their commissioner, so I don't know if they have to update that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, most all the intimitative-
It doesn't involve big, massive powers.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 20.
We don't want to turn it down. That's the-
Steven, sorry.
Whereas bids were received and generated 27th, 2012 for tree removal, pruning as follows, Ramos Tree Services, $27,280. Alstead, 72, 718. Alstead Alternate, $4,413.04. Whereas the Superintendent of Public Works reviewed the bids and advised that it would be in the best interest of the village to reject the bids. And whereas the Superintendent of Public Works has additionally recommended that bid specification be revised to better reflect the needs of the Village of Pleasantville, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees rejects the bids and authorizes the village to advertise.
Is there a second?
Second.
Situation like this where the bids are so dramatically different, uh, caused us to take a second look. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve, number 21.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Day Committee to use Memorial Plaza for Pleasantville Day celebrations on Saturday, May 19th. Mark your calendars from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, May 19th, 2012, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Saturday, May 19th, as Mindy indicated, mark that on your calendar and while you have the calendar out, uh, Saturday, July 14th, Pleasantville Music Festival. So those are the two fixed items on your calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Jonathan. A resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the purpose of purchasing highway construction materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we have in the past, we work with the Town of Mount Pleasant, uh, for purchasing, uh, asphalt, stone, pipe, winter sand, uh, calcium chloride, magnesium chloride, and block, thanks to Peter Soliano, Superintendent of Highways in Mount Pleasant and Steve Johnson here, for assisting with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 23.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following appointments. Tracy Tegmeyer to the Architectural Review Board to fill the unexpired term of Drazen Kokovich to expire April 2014. Mary Ann Quinn for the Library Board, uh, term of office December until December 2015. And Kristin O'Grizlo Conservation Advisory Board until April 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you to Tracy joining ARB, Mary Ann joining Library Board, and Christine joining the Conservation Advisory Board. Drazen Chachkovich, who has been on the ARB, I think actually was on and then, uh, returned again for an additional couple of terms, has served the village well. He has moved out of the Village of Pleasantville and therefore, uh, he is no longer eligible and we thank him, uh, for his service. And while we're at it, Kristine O'Grizlo now joining Conservation Advisory Board deserves a shout out for her great work on the aforementioned PleasantvilleRecycles.org website. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 24, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accept the donation from the Pleasantville Senior Club, an amount of $25 towards Clinton Street Senior Center Lunch Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
As is often the case, we are fortunate to have so many people generous to this fine program and thank the senior club. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 25.
Uh, this, um, is a refund for, uh, a resolution for a refund for garbage removal systems. Um, the property located at 126 Oakridge Road receives garbage removal services from the Town of Mount Pleasant. And whereas, um, 126 Oakridge Road has been taxed by the Village of Pleasantville for garbage removal services. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the assessor, hereby appears refunding the property owner as follows, for the year 2009, 2010, $369.42. And for the year 2010, 2011, $420.53.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry for that error. Happy to correct it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Jonathan, number 26.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to participate in the Northern Westchester Energy and Climate Consortium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Northern Westchester Energy and Climate Consortium, NWAAC, uh, is the, uh, organization that has represented communities in the northern half of the county. There's also a, an S, a Southern Westchester group called SWAC. Uh, we are happy to be allowed to join this. Uh, the membership group had been, uh, closed for a period of time, but, uh, they have invited us in and we're happy to participate along with virtually all the communities to the north of us. Uh, and, uh, we look forward to a productive relationship. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 27.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby refers the amendments to the zoning code to include fair housing ordinance provisions to the Planning Commission and Westchester County Department of Planning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mindy and Steve have been working on this, so why don't you two take the lead in describing what we're doing here?
Thank you. Um, the, uh, Westchester County, uh, as you know, has been, uh, subject of a lawsuit filed by federal government, which has resulted in a order to, uh, ensure that, uh, a certain number of affordable housing units are constructed within the county. And as part of that settlement, a, uh, a model ordinance on, uh, providing affordable housing, uh, has been put out by the county for the various, uh, communities, uh, within the county to, uh, to look at for inclusion in their local zoning ordinance. Mindy and I met with representatives from the county, uh, and, and others to go over that ordinance and to look at what provisions were there that might be, uh, modeled specifically for the Village of Pleasantville. Uh, we dropped out a few things that we didn't feel were applicable here in the village, but the basic, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, that we came up with was essentially the provision of 10% of, of multifamily housing units, uh, constructed within the village, new multifamily housing units, uh, that would be for sale or for rent. The way these affordable housing units work is that, uh, a family with income of either 80% or 60% of county median income as set annually by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development would be eligible for purchase or rental units respectively. And depending on the family's size, the amount of money that's earned by that family, a one-person family, two, three, four, et cetera, uh, would rise. Uh, and again, it's just very important to, uh, focus in on the fact that this, uh, legislation is aimed toward providing, uh, housing for working families. Uh, and many of the families that would be affected by this, uh, provision for fair, uh-
They got it.
... and affordable housing are younger families who are first starting in the marketplace and seniors who are living on incomes that are, uh, restricted by retirement benefits. The, uh, one thing that the legislation does not allow is any targeted, uh, provision of affordable housing to groups within the community, uh, special interest groups within the community. It has to be open to all in the public. What I like about this approach is, uh, my, my experience with it personally, uh, when I was the Planning Commissioner in Greenberg, we instituted in 1996 an ordinance that was almost identical to this, uh, ordinance that the county is promoting as a model ordinance. And as we've tailored it to the Village of Pleasantville, I think that, uh, the, the nice thing about it is that in allocating, uh, 10%, uh, minimum of 10% within, uh, new developments, what we, what we will find is that the number of affordable units will be spread throughout the community in newer developments and it won't, uh, won't promote an aggregation of, uh, of moderate-income housing units in one location. Uh, and, uh, the specifics of the law, which, which I think are just terrific for this kind of, uh, program, are that these units, uh, are not only spread throughout the developments themselves, but they're indistinguishable by law from other units within the development. So as you look at the exterior of a multifamily building, all the units look the same. And the way they, the, the, uh, the affordable, uh, status of the units is arrived at is because the law allows you to use a lower-cost, uh, furnishing within the unit. And they also may be, uh, subject to, uh, being supported by grants from, uh, the county or the federal government or the state. So there are various ways of achieving affordability within these units, but I think the most important thing is to, to understand is that they're out there, uh, they're available to the general public, uh, for the rental units. Every two years, they have to, uh, approve the residents in the rental units, that they are still, uh, within the affordable income category. Uh, and they're not supported in any way by the Village of Pleasantville. Uh, they're supported by the private sector within the developments in which they're located. Uh, so it's, it's, it's something that, uh, is, is so, uh, blind to individual project developments in my experience that once this, this type of law is instituted, it's just a matter of course. There are 10% of affordable housing units. I've found it's been completely non-controversial in any project that I know of, once it's been in the pipeline, because it's just a flat-out regulation. Everybody's doing it. And, uh, in my experience, it's been, uh, an excellent, uh, law that's worked out terrifically in Greenberg 16, 15 years ago, since it's been instituted. And I would expect here as well, uh, that it will, uh, also work out well. And I was talking with our building inspector today and since, uh, we do have a 10-unit development coming in rental on the corner of, uh, is it Cooley Street where, um, Meditrainio is located? He's already spoken to the developer of that parcel and there will be one unit in that 10-unit building that will be affordable. Uh, and so it's already happening.
Good. The set aside is for 10 or more units. 10%. Anything under 10 units isn't, um-
The model ordinance had suggested, uh, 10% of all units, which would be one unit for 10 units or more, but up, uh, from as few as five units when we had got some commentary back from the planning board when we first circulated the ordinance with that provision that that placed an undue burden on developers of smaller properties. And there was some concern that here in the downtown area where there may be some infill building above some of the existing retail areas, that would place an undue burden on smaller developers, smaller developments in those sorts of situations. So we decided to start with 10, which makes sense, I think. And the board here discussed and agreed as well that that was a, uh, a good number to start at.
Anything to add to that? So, uh, our, uh, resolution here is to refer our version of this, uh, model zoning code back to the Westchester Planning, uh, County Department of Planning and to our own Planning Commission for comment, and then we'll take that into account prior to enacting it, so.
Just one more thing is that it should be noted that none of our, um, uh, none of our codes were exclusionary. We didn't have to make any adjustments as far as that was concerned, only to what Steve has spoken to, um, that would just adjust it to, uh, fit into an, as an, as an ordinance. But as our code stood, we were not exclusionary and not in any violation and we had, always had, um, you know, provisions on, on the books that were, um, open to this type of thing anyway.
And just to be clear, Mindy and Steve worked very hard on this, but this is, we're not voting tonight to enact this because it does need to go to the county and to our own planning commission. So it is now a matter of public record, which I know the community's been interested in aspects of this in the past, so feel free to pick it up and read it. And if there is some comment or a different way of looking at it, we're open to suggestions as well.
Hey Patty, could we get that up as a link on the website?
Absolutely.
On the homepage also?
Sure. But you should put it within the context of what it is, the section of the, of the code of the village, and not take it out, because in the, you know, it should be seen in the context of the code.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so we'll get that also up on the website, Pleasantville-ny.gov. Reminds me, as I always do, to remind you that if you haven't already signed up, you can click on Subscribe to Notices on the village website, Pleasantville-ny.gov, and deliver to your email box the items you choose, agendas for the village board, agendas from zoning, planning, et cetera, general announcements, emergency announcements, et cetera. It's a great way for us to keep in touch with you and for you to keep an eye on what's going on. So we encourage you to sign up for those subscriber notes.
And there will be public hearings in this, right as this progresses.
We'd have to set a hearing. Once you get your comments back from the Planning Commission and the county, then you'll hold a public hearing on that.
And everyone will get that.
Because the county has to approve it, because it was their, you know, recommendation and their model ordinance. And as Steve had mentioned, we had taken some parts out of their suggestion.
Modified.
And they, well, yeah, they just didn't apply to the village of Pleasantville. So we hope they approve it.
Well, what happens is they'll send us a review, and they'll note the sections that aren't in compliance with their model ordinance, i.e. the five-to-nine units and the single-family detached home sections. And this board can override comments by the county planning board by supermajority if they're making the context that they object in any way to what we've done. I think it certainly would be simply important at that point in time to clearly state the reasons and the thinking behind what it was that we were doing. I don't think there's anything in any of this that we've looked at that's unforged, but it certainly is something that we need to address, because this is part of the county workout for the affirmatively, affordable, affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Fair and affordable housing.
A2F2H. It's a cousin of R2D2.
Not as fun to watch. That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, number 28.
No idea who's next.
Right, we've spent so long on that.
Who's next?
Stephen.
Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments. $150 from Budget Code F-1990.400 contingency to F-1380.400 miscellaneous charge of debt service. $755 from F-1999.400 contingency to F-1910.400 unallocated insurance. $8126 from F-1990.400 contingency to F-8340.425 water transfer and distribution outside services for a total of $9,031 in these amended budgets, in these budget amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
So these are circumstances where we have budget lines that have exceeded their budgeted amount, and we're drawing from the contingency, which is another budget line in the existing budget.
Why is, why are we pulling out a contingency for a water fund?
They don't.
Shouldn't there be a water fund?
It's all water fund, yes, all three of those line items.
Okay, it is all water fund.
All of them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, F is a code of the water.
Logical, F is water.
Yeah, it's bizarre.
I just have one other silly question. Is it F-1990 on all three contingencies?
Yes. It's all from the same.
The middle one just.
I think their contingency budget's $25,000 in terms of the appropriations, so this is the first time we're taking any transfer out of it.
We haven't seen that.
We never, we rarely do. Because within those, within those particular budget sections, there isn't any opportunity to transfer from other accounts. They're just so small and, like, debt service stands by itself. You can't take it from any place else, so contingency is really the only place it can transfer.
I think what Steve means is the middle one is a slightly different coding.
I just changed it.
That's different, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the nine and the zero. But thank you, Steve. They're all contingency.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I, we have one item on the new business category, written communication. The village clerk acknowledges receipt of the 2012 unpaid taxes report from the village treasurer as of January 30th, 2012. Unpaid taxes total $394,532.09. Said report is filed in the office of village clerk and the village treasurer. We beseech thee to catch up with your taxes. Any further new business comments?
Giants, I only have to say. The bowl championed Giants.
Pictures and catchers, that's all I have to say.
Win tomorrow, or is it two days?
Dolphins.
Excuse me.
That was not.
You just wait. Next year's my year.
That was uncalled for.
Really uncalled for, but, you know, I had to say it because, you know, the mayor that sits next to me that supports all those New England teams.
Our friends in the recycling committee, we had offered to include a sort of a every meeting tip about recycling, and while we were in the midst of this meeting today, they sent along a note that is partly stuff we already said, but let me just read it. Pleasantville's newest committee is focused on recycling. It's called PleasantvilleRecycle.org. Check their website for updated information on the village's recycling program, as well as news and details about nearby events. Don't miss the A-Z Recycling Guide, How to Recycle Almost Everything. You can sign up for their free newsletter on their homepage, and don't forget to like them on Facebook. So there's the many ways in which we can wrap our arms around the very good work our friends in the recycling committee are doing.
What does that have to do with the Giants?
We're trying to change.
Recycling.
Recycle the Giants.
Exactly. Recycling, you know, it was the Dolphins.
Red Sox fan, too. Just want you to know.
Is there a motion to close to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you all for your attention. We look forward to seeing you at our next regular meeting, Monday, February 27, Tax Grievance Night, Tuesday, February 21, at the Clinton Street Center from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00.
And we're obliged by law to be there for three hours. So we'll be there. Grievance, we love grievances.